Thank you. Fakalofala hiatus ki motoluosi he hinoa ayesu keriso. Fakaukamua ke he atua, ke he hana fakalofanoa. Fakauelahi au etu loa ku a amaheke amutolu ke fakalataha mai moe fia fia. Thank you so much for the invitation to come today. It's nice to be in Wellington. I had a one-minute-longer shower than I normally would in Auckland, because we've been timed at four minutes. But I really appreciate the invitation. Man, Laura, I could have just sat through that another 20 minutes. I've got no commitment to speaking. I was really enjoying what you had to say, so thank you. Can I thank John or Sir John Minto? He was Sir to my nephew back at Tongaro College in Otago. And the only reason my PowerPoint... And you'll see that my PowerPoint's actually filled with lots of photos. The only reason it was ready early was because my wife said to me, "Don't respect Mr. Minto. Don't disrespect Mr. Minto by not having it ready." So it's all ready for you, John, and thank you for the love that you've always expressed to my family. Folks, I come to you... I've called this Flip the Script, and we use this a lot in South Auckland, whereas I grew up in Otago. And yeah, yeah, best place, honestly, it really is. And Flip the Script is a youth program or kind of what drives a lot of our youth work at the moment. And it's all about how we re-engage, we offer a counter-narrative, if you want to use that kind of word. So that's why I've called it Flip the Script. It's a new way to tell the story. It's a new way to engage in the story. As I was coming down, one of the things that I've been reflecting on is how Pacific people... We often refer to the Pacific diaspora, but how we as Pacific people in New Zealand, our older parents who came here in the 50s and 60s, and then those of us who were born here, how we're having the conversation about what New Zealand is to us. And I want to talk today a little bit about how we're managing the conversation and how we might all... We as a community are managing the conversation and about how we as a society might be able to manage the conversation. So that's a little bit about where I want to head. So I don't expect you to take notes like crazy. We come from an oral tradition. And so if you just want to sit back and catch up on the sleep that you may have missed out coming down on the plane, then this is the time to do it. We have a saying in Saamuan. "I greeted you this morning in Nuiuan, but I am Saamuan. I was born here in New Zealand and then did some of my schooling in Saamua." My father was an itinerant Pentecostal minister. And so we were in and out of Saamua. I'm the youngest of six. And then it got too much to have me going with them, because the youngest usually does the travelling with the parent. And so they just left me in Saamua. And I had the best upbringing with my grandparents. It was way better than with my parents. And so... But interestingly, I'm the only one in my family that speaks Saamuan. We went through a schooling system in the 80s that constantly had reports going home to my parents saying, "Stop speaking Saamuan and start speaking English." And anyone who's done BICs and CALPS and linguistics study will know that my parents had limited English and high proficiency in Saamuan, whereas we probably had high proficiency in English because we were in a schooling system that was very English-driven and low proficiency in Saamuan. And so the language... Both languages didn't get very well progressed because everyone's trying to meet in the middle. And I'm really specific about offering you that as a background to what some of our challenges have been and how we manage the conversation. Because you'll find that there's a whole range of people my generation who are over 22 who are struggling because they have low proficiency Saamuan. And you think about it. You think about the hierarchy of a Saamuan family. When we go to family meetings, usually the eldest will speak on behalf of our family. It's a challenge when the eldest can't speak Saamuan. When we go home to Saamua, people often say, "Iliwul made ainga balangi there." They're saying of us, "Here comes the balangi family." And so you'll understand that our youth are struggling because they love the idea of the homelands being Saamua or Tonga. Yet when we go home, we're referred to as balangi because so many of us don't speak the language. That's what we're navigating as a community to kind of work out where we belong in this society. And so I thought it's important that you understand that context because at the same time, we're being demanded of to vote. Hey, young people, you've got to vote now. Young people are saying, "Man, I don't even know where I fit in the family." There's a saying in Saamuan that goes... And you're going to help me with time, eh, Julia? You just wave your hand and I will listen to you. And the saying in Saamuan is, "E leleletoloa a ma au ile vai." That the bird will fly and it will fly far. It will be gone for long periods, but it will always find its bearing off the water from which it came from. So that's what we use for Saamuan... For many Saamuis, is understanding that what is that water? The water that is about to overrun some of our islands in climate change? It is that water that we are looking towards. Efeleliho Ofa was a Tongan philosopher who talked about our sea of islands. And he said, "Often, we've been looked at from the West as a group of disparate or disparate islands that are small and kind of disconnected." We said, "Actually, we've neglected..." The West have neglected the fact... That's actually the sea that draws us together, that gives us power, that gives us a sense of being, gives us a sense of place. And so I think... I thought I'd introduce you to the saying that we have a lot of in Saamuan. A lot of academic study now is driven by... For Pacific scholars is undergirded by the Talanoa methodology. And I just want to touch on this for a moment because I think it helps you to understand or helps us to understand how we come about conversations. So in Tongan society, they have the fekava. "I'm Saamuan, so I'm trying to touch on all the islands here." But they have the fekava. And it's where people will come and they sit around together and they mix the kava, the ava drink. In Saamuan, we call it ava. And there, they share the drink. But here, they have what we call the talanoa. So talanoa is a compound word. Tala means... I wrote it down because I knew I'd forget. Tala means story or words, how we group words together, how we tell story. Noa means nothing. And so when we come together, nothing. Now, think about that. Without form, nothing. So when we come together to drink the kava together, we sit around and we start with nothing. We start with no agenda to tell our stories. And in that, we kind of move around. We have a particular kind of rhythm. Do people kind of... So you follow... We start nowhere. No one's got an agenda. And we just kind of talk, just talk through things. And the conversation can often be very lighthearted and humorous, but it can also be extremely deep. But it starts on the mat where everyone is at the same level. No one is seated higher than somebody else. Everyone... Doesn't matter of your age. You all sit around the mat together. There are a few concepts. So there's usually... I've got some writers there. They're all Pacific people. But there's around what they call... Around 16 parts to what the talanoa is. And I was raised with this. So it was nice to read someone's work who kind of pulled things apart because, you know, you think, "Oh, yeah, yeah, that's true of talanoa." The top one is Ofa. These are all words in Tongan. The word Ofa means love. And so within the talanoa, when we come together, when we just start talking away and navigating a conversation, there is love. There is a whole lot of love present in the conversation. And what that love does is it draws you in because you know you are welcome to the conversation, that what you have to say, whatever topic it is that you want to talk about, there's love enough for you to participate in the conversation. I'm not sure which way we're going. To this side of it is mahfana. The word mahfana means warmth. And again, when we talk about warmth, it's how are we inviting? How are we lovingly inviting someone into the conversation so they feel a sense of warmth? I belong here. This is a cool conversation to be a part of. So that's what the word mahfana means. The bottom one is maalie. So I'll use a slightly Saamuan take on maalie. Maalie means funny or humorous. So I don't know if there are any teachers in the room, and I'm sure Mr. Minto will remember this, but often, big island boys have the most screechiest laugh. And so people would often say, "Man..." One of the challenges teachers face... I used to lecture in teacher education. And when we'd go into schools, people would always say to us, the teachers, "Oh, I really struggle because all they do is laugh. They just laugh at everything." That maalie means that the conversation is such that people feel so committed to it, so a part of it, that they can just crack up. We laugh about everything. When we are in pain, we laugh. When we are sad, we laugh. When we're happy and things are funny, we laugh. Laugh is just one of the ways we handle things. But in the conversation, there's a lot of joy. There's a lot of love. But maalie also means it flows. So that's the other meaning to the word maalie, that there's rhythm to the conversation, that there's a flow to the conversation. And what we know as people who participate in these fekava is that as topics move, as we touch on topics that might be a little bit heavier or deeper, we understand that that's part of the flow. Sometimes, someone might say something funny about it and we'll all crack up. But other times, we'll allow that conversation to go to a deeper level. So that's what the word maalie means. And finally, what I've pulled out there, the fourth part of it, is fakaapaapa. Fakaapaapa means respect. And it means that we're going to disagree along the way. But our respect is such that we'll let you finish what you have to say and then we'll jump in, keeping the rhythm. So there's no need to yell over the top of someone. We just let them finish. And we're really good at holding things in. You know, you would never know that I completely vehemently disagree with you because I'm smiling. Thank you. But fakaapaapa means that there's respect. And so the reason I want to introduce you to the notion of talanoa is because that is how we have conversations. I wonder if in flipping the script, that's how New Zealand might want to look at its conversations. One of the things that often challenges me... I'm a member of the Labor Party. And one of the things that often challenges me is that when people emailing me... And I got an email just last night where someone said to me, "Efeleliho, with your socially conservative views, I don't know how you can be in a progressive party." And then I went bang, saying, "Hmm, is the Labor progressive?" No, I'm kidding, I'm kidding. And I know this is being recorded. So to all my Labor friends, that was an honest joke. Maalie, flow, rhythm. I just wanted to say that I thought Mr. Minto did the dirty on me because he invited me to come and speak. And then in the next email, he said, "Oh, and by the way, you're being recorded." I'm always getting into trouble for the things I say. I often ask people now when they invite me to come and speak at places, "Are they being recorded?" Because I know that when I leave here today, you will only imagine the number of people emailing me saying all sorts of things. But I want to hold what I've just asked you or told you about in my challenge as being a person of Pacific descent who has held socially... And holds socially conservative views in certain things and is part of a progressive movement. And I think anyone watching this or here today will know that when it comes to the Labor Party, the Labor Party has leaned on the Pacific vote for a long time. But the challenge we have is, whether it's the Labor Party, whether it's the union movement, whether it's our schools, just how... Whether it's a progressive movement, just how open are we to allowing them to have their voice, to be part of the conversation and stop chopping them at the knees? I get asked all the time by people, "I think you should leave the Labor Party." Just last week after Q and A, when I appeared on Q and A, someone rang me and said, "You should just go join the National Party. You're not progressive." We're still judging people. That is not... In my view, that's not a progressive trait. Or perhaps it's the progressive trait that we're dealing to, that we've become so good at judging the socially conservative Pacific people that as a result of that, we're happy to represent you in our unions, but you won't make it to the decision-making tables. Who's out there in the main... Marching for the living wage? It's our people. Who makes the decisions? It's definitely not our people. And that's how we need to challenge ourselves as to whether or not we are using the talanoa process to invite people to the conversation where we're all on the same level. Imagine, eh, if we were all just speaking Saamuan and not English? Wouldn't that be the best for New Zealand, anyway? I haven't come to launch language policy for our schools. Over the last little while, we've all been connected and charged and energized by some collective things that are going on in the world. There is homelessness. We know that homelessness at its hardest edge impacts most on Maori and Pacific, on young people and on gay, lesbian, transgender young people in particular. We've seen... We know that in climate change, eh, that we've been talking a lot, the Pacific people are talking... I know that there's a Pacific climate change warrior person that's come today. So just want to say hi to you. But we know that it's our islands that are going to be overrun by the waters that we look to to give us a sense of place and belonging. And yet, when we start talking about climate refugees, I don't know that New Zealand's been honest in its desire to receive people from the Pacific. And I think that's a challenge all of us need to take up. We're part of... You know, when we say things like, "We're in this together," then let's be in this Pacifically together. We're part of New Zealand as much as New Zealand is part of the Pacific. The Black Lives Matter movement has really lifted our optics on racism. It's really funny because, you know... Well, it's not really funny, but you know what I mean. I go to a... We share... My wife is Catholic. So one week on a Sunday, we'll go to a mass. And then the following Sunday, we'll go to a Pentecostal church because that was my upbringing. And so it's... You know, my poor kids are thinking, "Oh, man, I don't know what to do." You know, they sing way better in the Pentecostal churches. And the Catholics are good folk. But anyway... And yet, I remember... We were, you know... We really enjoyed being part of the Black Lives Movement and the marches. And on the one hand, there's a whole group of our young people saying, "Yes, thank you, Efeleliho, that we can all walk through this together." And then there's the evangelical part of my person, the church, who are telling me, "Oh, that movement is an evil movement. It's a demonic movement. How could you even be there?" We're trying our best as a family to navigate all of these spaces here. And it's tough. A couple of years ago, I was misquoted on the AM show. So nothing normal. Or nothing not normal. And I had said in an interview that I wanted to challenge our churches... Remember, I'm the son of a preacher. I wanted to challenge our churches to rethink tithing. Well, that night... And so I thought, "Oh, yeah, AM show, did my interview." And off I went, thinking it was going to be a lovely day. Within an hour... Within an hour, my mother... My father passed away about 12 years ago. Within an hour, my mum was getting calls from senior church ministers telling her that her son was a bad boy and sinful. Because the TV3 had reported it as me saying, "Councillor says stop paying tithes." And so I went into my meetings, came out at the end of the day, noticed all the stuff that was on Facebook. And I thought, "Oh, no, I'm in trouble." What people don't understand for this particular politician is I've got cultural complexities that I've got to navigate. They were ringing my mother. My mother doesn't have her husband around anymore to offer the buffer to the Saamuan ministers. And anyone who knows Saamuan culture well will know that our minister is the closest thing we have to God. And so when I was saying we need to challenge ourselves in tithing, the reason we give so much to the church is because the minister handles the money and uses it in a way that he understands. And more often than not, it's a he... How God is telling him to distribute the money. We default to that theology. We don't challenge it. My mum... Remember, my dad was a minister. The point I'm trying to make is that this is what we're trying to navigate. That the councillor... I told a couple of councillors what happened. A week later, I was before a group of ministers with my mother, before all of these church ministers, as they were telling me how wrong I was, even though I had been misquoted. I was still wrong. I sat through that 90 minutes of them telling me how bad and naughty a boy I was and how sinful I was. And I didn't say a word. And then true to Saamuan form, what does my mum say to me? My mum whispers to me in Saamuan, "Kneel down and apologize." And I'm sitting there thinking, "Are you for real, woman?" They should be apologizing to me. And then Duncan Garner and his team should come in and apologize to me. So we both knelt down. This is my 75-year-old mother. And we said sorry to the church ministers for something I hadn't done. Do you understand what we're trying to navigate? And that's why it's such a challenge for us because we have a theology that we've adhered to. And we've got a society that's telling us every day in school, "You can have your say. Just say whatever you want." And we do. But we wear multiple hats and we're in multiple worlds. And that is the world I'm asking you to understand on our behalf. Because no other councillor has to get on their knees in front of church ministers and make an apology. But I had to. And then I maintained the order. I maintained the blessing because all my mum... My mum's very traditional. She was a very... She's a very quiet Saamuan woman who just does what she's told essentially. That's how mum was raised. And I've got to respect that, even though in my heart, I'm saying, "My man, honestly, the theology is so mixed up." But anyway... So I'll look to closing very shortly. But I just wanted to reflect on my time in local government politics in Auckland. And the first point is something I've just wanted to share with you, that in finding our voice, often we talk about... And I wonder if there's a bit of privilege in our lens. We say, "We've just got to get people to the table." But I think we forget that getting to the table, we're still, as Pacific people, trying to work out what we're allowed to say. Because remember, we come from a respect place. Can I just say something real quick in history? We had a princess warrior, Nafo Nua, in Saamuan history. Nafo Nua did a prophecy over Saamua. Her prophecy was this, "One day, there will be a new form of governance for Saamua." So all of Saamua is waiting. This goes back into our annals of history. You know who came? The missionaries. The missionaries came. Saamuis interpreted that as that is the fulfillment of Nafo Nua's prophecy over Saamua. That is why we often refer to the time the missionaries came. I always used to say to Dad, "Dad, what did we believe as people before the missionaries?" And Dad would always say, "Aua ke popole meanga, o aso pungsaa." "Don't worry about those things. Those were the days of darkness." So do you see why we're so respectful to... Whoops, respectful to the church? We're respectful to white people? Because it was white people who came with the message of the gospel. Christianity is written in Saamua's constitution. That's why we are the way we are. So that's... That's the voice that we're trying to find. Is how do we challenge that narrative, that Saamuan narrative, against a backdrop of being in New Zealand? So I just wanted to talk about that. Nurture and mentor. I'm really challenged. My background is in youth development. I've got a whole bunch of young guys. And I do a lot of mentoring for young men in particular. And I could resign tomorrow. And I know that there'd be a whole bunch of guys ready to take over. I think the days of career politicians is over. We have had that day. And honestly, when I meet people... I was an MP for 9,064 years. I just think, "Honestly, what is wrong with you?" You know, no one is reading the research. The research is really clear. It says that young people, every two, between two and five years, we change kind of... What's the word? Jobs or careers, whatever. So when you've been a politician for 9,062 years, honestly, you've really lacked reading some research. Go read a book. And what I'm saying is... And I'm... I'm trying to be maalie and silly. But I think we've got to make room. One of the things we're strong in in youth mentoring is don't become the ceiling. And it's important that people like Efeleliho get out of the way. So my job isn't just to get out of the way and everyone mourns my loss and my departure for the next 50 years while we're busy trying to find someone new. I should be departing and we should be rejoicing because there's five other people who could do as good or get this, an even better job. And that takes security in a person. And I know that there are boys out there in South Auckland who do way better than me. You know, it doesn't bother me at all because I want them to do better than me. If we're always looking for constant improvements, then we've got to do better. Being authentic. I really enjoy my role on council. And I'm going to say something that might offend people. I know that with the number of times I've appeared on Breakfast and AM Show and Q and A, that there are politicians who are jealous. You know, the mock... The mock when I leave the studio at TVNZ is the boys will text me and go, "Honestly, Fez, like, you're just going to be hated on after this." The brown boy from Otago giving economic commentary. They always have me on Q and A, sitting next to Freya O'Sullivan. I think she feels all right with me now. There are times where I used to think people used to come on... You know, when you watch those commentator things, everyone's trying to get their bite. And I just sit there calmly. John Campbell said to me one day, he goes, "Why don't you like..." I was on a panel once with Michelle Bog. And someone said to me... After the interview, it was with Hayley and Jake Tame that time. They said to me, "Why don't you try and jump in and interrupt?" And I said, "'Cause that's not talanoa. It is rude for me to interrupt someone." Get this, I was on with a Maori person. I've forgotten, Shay somebody from Shay... You know, young and does leadership mentoring. you know, young and does leadership mentor, I was on with Shay. You know, me and Shay, he's Maori, I'm Samoan. They asked us a question, but they made the error of not saying someone's name. Shay and I looked at each other like, you go first. And he was going, no, you go first. I said, you go first. And he said to me, no, you should go first, you're older. And I said, you should go first because you're tangatafenua. Do you see the difference? Whereas the other commentators, they haven't even finished the question and people have jumped in. And I just think, what's wrong with you people? Are you that desperate to speak? And often half the stuff you say is not worthy to be heard. And just finally, and this, yep, I'm finishing, oh, good time. Just finally, I wanted to say that I'm driven by my pain. On the left, this is before my daughter was born, on the left is a photo that was taken half an hour before I was inaugurated as a councillor. We separated and fear with my family went to the front of the hall and I was brought in through the side. My wife was told, you can't sit in the place reserved for VIPs. I'm broken. I bought my tissues, I went and found some tissues where I thought I might cry and my wife's going to give me a smack now, John, because she said, don't cry, Efesul. My wife held the experience until we were driving home after the inauguration. And she said, oh, Efes, by the way, you know who was with my wife when they told her you can't sit at the front, go sit at the back? It was my mother. The same woman who knelt down in front of the ministers to apologize was my wife's father, who was a high Samoan chief and our church minister. I have never felt so humiliated on behalf of my family. I have two girls. And if the income inequality stuff is true, then I know that my two girls will not make as much as a white man. I also know that my two girls will not make as much as a white woman. And I will do everything I can in my power to at least begin a conversation so that the people who look on those girls will love them the way I'm absolutely in love with them. When they dropped me off at the airport and my elder girl cried because she said, dad, you haven't come to one of my netball games. And I said, honey, mum's going to send me the live, the Facebook live and I'll be cheering you on. But I'm doing this because it's Mr. Minto and he's been a good man to our families. But I'm also doing this because I'm talking to people who are going to make sure that you are looked upon as an equal who has something to offer this nation. If we're going to do something good, then it's time that we flipped the script. Thank you so much.
Jora, thank you, Efesul. That was a wonderful talk. I was, yep, so, so many thoughts, especially thinking about how the water gives you bearing. You, you find your place in your relationship to the water. And your girls do absolutely, the conversation and the paradigm of the conversation has to change so that your girls are part of the conversation. Yeah, I remember that moment that you were talking about. It was, it was a big shock to many of us, but perhaps not so to your mother. Yeah. We have got some time for a couple of partai, menehe partai akoto, if you've got a question. Does anybody have, yes, we have. Thanks.
Kira, thank you so much for that. And first to comment, because I'm a New Zealander. I think some of those ministers would probably have said that Jesus Christ was a bad boy for chasing the preachers from the temple. You know, it's, it's a thing. But thank you so much for your forbearance. And this may be a little off track, but I was wondering how much social media has come to be more like talanoa as well? You and I sometimes chat on Twitter. And so in that, that space of starting from nothing and into conversations, how can we use those types of social media platforms to actually widen the conversation and engage with people? Because I know that you model it there, but other people bring in other things. So I'm just wondering, you know, whether it's Twitter, Facebook, Instagram, can we use this as a meeting space to be sharing things?
Yeah, I, I think we can. One of the challenges though is that the ability to see one another or, and not even see, but feel one another. And that's the driver of the feikava is that people are sitting one another, you can read a mood. I think it's difficult now on social media because it's hard for everyone to express through what they're writing, what that feeling of them is. And, you know, I think sometimes we're just after the quick soundbite, but actually delving into what people are feeling and what their background is. Because one of the things in talanoa that you do is you get to understand what people's background is. I've tried my best in this conversation to at least introduce you to what's kind of driving me. That's not always possible in a Facebook conversation or a Twitter conversation unless people are calm and, and they're receptive to some differences. But I'm not sure that that's the social media space at the moment. I think we're a bit harsher on Twitter. But yeah, I think you can, you can have good conversations with people because there are some really cool people who are kind of with it. Then there are some who just want to have a go at you, yeah?
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Agnes Mangulee and I am an advocate on behalf of Auckland Action Against Poverty. For me, a girl born and raised in Otaara, I'm so proud to have Efesul Faanana Efesul Collins stand up and say what he had to say. Everything he has mentioned in regards to our culture, our children and the poverty that we fight against is absolutely true. So for him to stand up and voice it on behalf of all of us Samoans and Pacific people, thank you. Thank you very much, Faanana. And it makes me also more determined than ever. And I know that today I was meant to come here and be a part of this. This is my first time being here and also being involved in politics and also part of wanting to make a massive change for Aotearoa. And so I just wanted to offer my thanks. So proud to sit here and listen. And for me, what I want to say is, I would like to be part of how you are going to engage our young ones in how we're going to have this talanoa. So I'm going to be here to help whenever you need. And also, yeah, hopefully in future, we'll be seeing more of each other throughout these campaigns. So thank you very much, Faanana, and God bless you all.